That's a major thing. I mean, whether you love this project or not, you you're gonna have an issue. And I'm sure the people on Bernzav won't be appreciative of having, you know, twelve hundred ten wheels go up and down. That's a problem. They move them in and out. It's not just taking it out. It's 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 going both ways. You take the material out, you take the material in, so you get double the number of trips. So those are the big issues, but as I go back, I'll reiterate, and I know you're probably tired of hearing me, but I'll go back to the variants. It's only born nineteen but I'll go back to the variance. Tony Board, 1986, said, boom, you need a variance. We give you a variance because you didn't have frontage. So that's where I'll end it tight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm going to see if David could speak on a couple of these issues, if you don't mind coming up.
Chairman.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, we have, before we even get into kind of the meat and potatoes of the project itself and setbacks and all that stuff, I don't know if you had, you know, I know there was a comment about the new bylaw that was passed at town meeting.
Correct.
So I think we talked briefly about, you know, its applicability here.
Correct.
Would it change anything?
It does not.
On this case?
No.
Yeah.
It, well, it's to the purview of the board if they want to obviously implement anything that's actually in Section 5. But currently, the change in the zoning affected, if I may get the...
Yeah, 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 yeah. They will be helpful for, I know we talked about it, but now that we kind of have a case before us.
Sorry, Ms. Chairman. Section 5B13D was where the change was actually made. There was a Section 4I was added. If there is to be more than one principal building on a lot, which is in this case, there shall be a minimum of 10,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. The section that that was added to is if those buildings have more than three units in them, then this would apply directly. These do not. These have only one unit in each one.
One unit, yeah.
Correct. But again, because it's in Section 5, any one of these conditions, you can impose them by the board.
Right, right. Yeah, I think we've talked, I've talked to town council before too about conditions we could, you know, put on these cases under the most principled dwellings on the lot.
Right, and I think one of the reasons why, actually, the planning board that brought it forth was the fact that they were worried about litigation down the road. If in any of these cases, you're technically conditioning something when you didn't have anything to use for conditions. This in this case actually does give you reason to use any one of those conditions.
I wish, I wish it was, took it a next step on the redrafting it.
It was done so quickly.
Nonetheless.
I agree with you. It just...
It is what it is. Yeah. No, it is. It's hard to get them through a town meeting, but I think this...
It's too nice.
There's a ton of sections in here that need cleaning up, this being one of the big ones, so.
Yes.
All right, and then, I don't know if you've had, I mean, obviously, not a legal opinion on frontage and all that, but I mean, you've looked at, you know, I mean, you cited them for what they needed to be here for tonight.
Correct.
So I think you're comfortable still with, I mean, from our point.
Initially, correct. But I mean, obviously, the board has to feel comfortable with what's presented to them as well. And obviously, from the time I first saw it to tonight was a long time in between. I know town council was waiting to some point. But when it comes down to it, when they do apply for permit, they're going to have to, again, prove to my office that they do have the frontage.
Yeah. Any other questions for David while he's up here?
I guess just, if I could, the, there was a question raised about whether special permits required for being in the floodplain and for removal of the material. That was not before you when you saw this the first time.
Yeah, it was not before me. I've actually not weighed in on that at all.
Okay.
It's something if, obviously, if the board takes it under advisement, I'd leave that part open for at least my comment on that in the future.
Because it may need to amend the application or file, and we may have to do something on that. If the applicants so choose is to kind of make sure everything's included into one, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yep.
That's probably the same question he's going to answer.
What?
Floodplain.
Yeah.
I'll answer a couple. There is a floodplain down by Crystal Brook that is shown on the plan. You can see the 100-year floodline. It's on your revised plan. It was always on the plan. It probably wasn't as full as it is now. But also, just to speak on Burn's Ave, there is a recorded taking document. This is my own copy. There is a plan that shows the taking, which I'll let you use. If I give you copies after the meeting, I can make copies and send them to you if you just want to see it for now. The document, and it was a plan reference to the document.
1982?
1946.
Oh.
I probably wrote that.
The plan was 82, though?
This is 1986 plan, but this is...
Well, the plan was recorded in 86.
This is the layout that was shown. They were showing the layout on here from 1946 on this plan. It's always, and they were showing Gay Ave. But they give the actual distance from Pleasant Street to the end of the taking, which I have, we've done a complete survey of that area from Pleasant Street, Union Street, Burn's Ave, all the way around Brooks.
But this is where the town layout, the town ended at that point, right?
No, you got to go by the distance in the deep.
What is that dotted line?
That's, it's not correct. That's what it says, what it says on my writing, one of my surveys. This plan has some inaccuracies in it. You can see the distances that were written on.
Why do we have it?
It was just a plan that was there for Burn's Ave showing that there was a town layout from 1946. That's all. That's all I'm showing as you. The actual taking is in the deep. That's the taking. You can read that document. It gives you the distances, how far down the street it was taken.
1946. Did you say you were doing the special permit for the floodplain?
I did not say that. We'll look into it.
That's only building in it.
Not altering it.
They're not going near it.
I thought that the removal...
Yeah, but they're not going near it. Oh, actually, you know...
I thought the removal...
Are they still putting the water line through? Yeah?
Yes.
Water and sewer line go through the floodplain. We're not altering or filling the floodplain in that sense. I could provide you with a plan showing the whole street.
And none of these numbers even match up.
No, I don't. That's why it said it was a special plan.
Right, so it doesn't really do anybody any good.
No, but you go by the taking, so if you do a survey, you go by the taking.
Well, right, but I mean, it doesn't line, I don't know what, 526 feet down is to a cement bound. Did you find these bounds, you think?
Oh, yeah.
What?
Yeah, we found bounds.
All right, so...
We've surveyed from Union Pleasant all the way around down Burn's Ave and through Brooklyn. We found all the bounds of Pleasant and Burn's Ave. We have this distance locked in.
You have the bounds on that plan?
Uh, this is a site plan, so they wouldn't be honest. This isn't a recordable plan.
All right.
But we locked down, we calculated in from Pleasant Street, we had all this acceptances. So we have, I can provide that if you need it, a whole length of the road. I have it in a survey in our files. It's not a recordable plan in our files at this point in time. But we did a complete survey of the neighborhood. So I didn't just arbitrarily pick a spot on Burn's Ave and say, this is where the road ends. We surveyed in from Pleasant Street.
Where does it end?
The acceptance is right here where we have a wave.
In the middle of Gay?
In the middle of Gay Ave.
Right here.
Yeah, okay.
About 15 feet short of our property.
That's where the ta, that's where this taking ends, you're saying?
That's where that taking ends.
Yeah.
That's where it stops being a public way.
And the rest is private way by...
The rest is private way.
Which dot, what is it from?
That's a legal page.
I know, how, when was it, when did it become a private way?
Well, the way has gone back, goes back to like 1895, after we used, look at the deeds.
What happened, I'm just curious, how far?
Well, if you, if you look at the title review that we've done, the deed goes back to 1895, the description indeed, showing, describing Burn's Ave and showing the Felton lot being described with 100 feet of frontage on Burn's Ave. So that's the documentation that evidences that it was in existence at the time.
Can you submit, submit a copy for the file?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Send me a copy.
Actually, it was in the package that we submitted with our...
This was the taking, was it?
Yeah, it was in our legal memorandum that we submitted way back several months ago.
Yeah, in May.
From Rackman and Sawyer.
Yeah, in March.
You'll find all the documents in there with the plans and the meets and bounds and that sort of thing.
Including the taking?
Including the taking, including the plan for the taking, the description of the deed that describes Burn's Ave in existence.
No, it's in there. The taking's in there, though.
Excuse me?
The taking's in there, yeah.
Yeah, the takings would be in there, too. But subsequent plans, Mr. Conroy has, continues to say, where is the layout? Well, this plan here, which is a 1986 plan endorsed by the planning board in 1982, well, recorded in 1986, shows a survey that was done that shows the end of Burn's Ave as it extends beyond the accepted portion of Burn's Ave, where the public way stops and the private way starts. And it shows the property, the 48 Burn's Ave with 100 feet of frontage on the way. So I don't know where he's coming up with the claim that there's no plan. There's plenty of plans on record that show Burn's Ave existing on recorded plans.
Are we waiting for, like, Maggie to finish her back and forth?
Yeah.
Because at some point, I'd be interested to see, I don't know if we've ever seen the traffic report or stormwater.
Yeah, sewer capacity.
Or sewer capacity.
Well, I can address those. First of all, the traffic study was submitted with the original application, and we've received our water and sewer connection permit from the Water and Sewer Commission. They've not requested anything about sewer capacity.
We requested.
Excuse me?
We will request it.
Okay, that's fine if that's the case. Well, nobody's requested it of us yet, so.
You got it.
Okay. What was the other question? Stormwater management? That's all been part of the application process and...
That's going to be with Maggie.
It has been reviewed.
Yeah, and to Chairman's point, I don't like to get into detail, if you're going back and forth with Maggie, right? I mean, I think that's a good, healthy process. Let the experts go back and forth. Then once you get to a point where all of her conditions, I'd like to understand it.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, because it goes to the point of, you know, I'm more focused on the number of units, because that's the application, right? You know, whether the lot would support the number of units through, you know, traffic, stormwater, you know, sewer, water capacity.
I'd like to just say one thing about the statement by Mr. Conroy regarding fill and material at on-site. There is evidence of historical filling that's ongoing on the site. It's a combination of old building materials and some coal, coal ash that's been, is being reviewed by our environmental people. There is no anticipation that there will be any hauling of material off-site. There will be material that will be hauled on-site, but no material that will be held off-site other than any metal debris from taking down a building that's there. There's a collapsed garage that's on-site. But any unsuitable material that is not eligible to be recycled on-site will be removed via dumpsters as any normal demolition of a building would take place. But there is no anticipation that there will be other material hauled off-site.
Your environmental people have finished the testing?
Excuse me?
The environmental people have finished the testing?
Yeah, actually, I met with them today. We should have a report shortly, so.
I'd be interested in that.
I don't trust Burn's Ave to tell you that.
I would be interested in that.
Oh, I would, too.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just queuing up the requests, so you have a good last.
Yeah, no, we know, you know, we've been asked certain information by various boards. It would be nice if, tonight, if there are, if there's any other information that this board would require that we be given that information so that we can submit it. So, like, tonight, it's the first time I'm hearing about a sewer capacity analysis of some sort.
I just heard about it, too.
Yeah.
That was in a letter.
I just heard about it, too.
Well, if the sewer department isn't requesting it...
No, Maggie.
No, but Maggie's not the sewer department and, you know, with all due...
Well, we just also heard that there was a sewer break.
Well, Mr. Conroy referenced the sewer break on Burn's Ave. We're not connecting the sewer to Burn's Ave. We're connecting the sewer to Union Street. So we're not affecting anything on Burn's Ave other than the looping of the water.
Okay.
Well, I mean, yeah. Then I touch on the sewer in Burn's Ave.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a touch, Ron.
Just as a point of reference, Maggie's comments is telling us that we should consult with Superintendent of Sewer and Water, who we've been there, who we've got permit. So I would think that's been resolved. So I don't think...
We just had nothing from, from Ricky. He had nothing, but I know. Maybe you can get something.
I'd be happy to submit, I'll be happy to submit whatever we have.
Yeah, we'll get you something from our sewer.
Just trying to relook at the title on that one, that piece, that B2 piece, that's at the end there, so. That, there's no dispute over that piece, right?
Is that my...
That's as far as you know, right?
As far as we know.
As far as we know, there's no dispute over any portion of it, so. There's a claim that's been made, but nobody's provided us with any kind of legal title.
A claim that, a claim made over what, though?
There's been a claim made over the portion of Burn's Ave that fronts along the Campbell property, but nobody has provided us...
Right, I understand that, but then there's that piece at the end that is part of your property.
Yeah, there's no dispute over that. It's part of the ownership.
Yeah.
Are we, are we short? We're missing, I didn't have one. That's part of my question.
Yeah.
Did this come from the applicant?
Yeah.
So we have, what, two?
We have four.
Actually, I had, I don't know, I submitted 11 of them, so. Nope.
All right.
Yeah.
We'll keep moving ahead. Any other members of the public here? All right, Jim?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you. Kathy Campbell, Burn's Ave, and Christopher Campbell, 35, Burn's Ave. I unfortunately didn't have an opportunity to read town council's comments. I'm a little bit unclear of what the real decision was. I'm hearing that a final decision was made, but yet a final decision really hasn't been made. I agree with Mr. Petrosi. The research back to 1985 shows that piece of property that we own, the B1, B2, had not changed in terms of the frontage. I think I submitted a cop, or Mr. Conroy actually submitted a copy of our variance from 1986. We had 62.28 feet of approved frontage in our lot, and we were not able to build until we appeared here and got a special permit to build so that we had our 100 feet of frontage. So I agree with Mr. Conroy's comments, and I'm very, a little bit shocked. We didn't have approved frontage on an approved portion of Burn's Ave, and we needed a special variance in order to build our house. Where our property stops is where, and I guess maybe it might be helpful, if I may approach you for a moment.
Of course, yep.
So I apologize, I think I presented this before.
Yep.
So this is going down Burn's Ave, this is the...
I'm just making sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, again, it's...
Oh, is it going to be submitted to for...
We've already had this.
Yeah, you had this.
It's actually, it's probably not...
So, we're, well, just so, it's clear to us what you're talking about, but I think everybody has a copy of this in there.
So I just want to be clear that this, that this piece of property that everybody has referred to, or Mr. Petrosi refers to as the way that everybody's been using, this is the piece of property, this is our property, this goes from our, goes out from our garage.
These you could submit tonight?
Absolutely, yeah. So it goes from here to here. This is the 20 feet, and this is my rock in my rhododendrum garden. This property has never been used by the Feltons. It's never been used by anyone on Burn's Ave. So this is the piece of property here that everybody keeps referring to.
Where is the rock, just on that, on your plan, just so you can make it...
It's on the map right here, you can look at it.
Oh, right there, yes.
It's right there. He's got it on there.
Yeah, he's got the rock on there. So I just wanted to...
And this, and this one would be, this is, so this is, what I'm looking at here is looking from the other side back at your property? This is your property back here, or no?
No.
This is across the street.
No, it's here.
All right, okay.
Yeah, so our garage is here. This is, this is the portion of Burn's Ave that's not approved. not approved, so basically it comes right down. But this, so this is the property that everybody keeps referring to that's maintained by the town and is used on a daily basis. So, it is not maintained.
It looks very busy. A lot of traffic.
Oh, that's okay. So, you may have that.
Yep.
And do you need a third one?
No, we just actually need one, you know, yeah, that's fine.
I'll just keep on for me.
Thanks.
So, I think the.
Well, yeah, pictures are helpful.
They really are.
Which way, which way is this? Can you, just come down this way.
This is.
We're in our, we're like in our yard.
Do you see, see where the road ends?
Yeah.
It's this half of the road for the 100 feet.
This will be here.
Is where this, that's what she says. It's over here.
I know. I'm just.
Would be like right there.
No.
Oh, no, you're saying it's right here.
It's within that half of the road, I think is what she's saying.
Yes, it's, it's the 20-foot portion of.
Down the road, the approved road actually ends right on that rock.
Which is right there.
Right there, that's correct. He's got it, yeah. So, it ends right there. And he also talks about the taking of Burn's Ave. It stops at that rock. It was never taken beyond that point, and they also brought that up. And that's on my father's deed. My father owned the whole Burn's Ave in front of, in front of 31.
31.
And it was taken. It's actually on the deed which you have.
This, 52199 in this four feet right here, this is the 526-foot of taking of Burn's Ave.
This was never taken, and it's never been used by anybody but us. In fact, if I want to go onto my backyard, I have to go over the Felton's property.
To get to back.
To get to it. The Feltons have never used this. No one's ever used it. They have 60 feet between here and there to get in there, because they have about a 40-foot setback, and then they have their own 20 feet. It's quite an open area. And there's no part of it that's paved, except maybe an inch or two, that's it.
Okay. That clears up. Okay.
I think I also, I'm a little bit discombobulated. I think I also had some concerns about the water draining from an existing manhole at 31 Burn's Ave, which is at the rim about 118 feet, all the way down past 38, Mr. Conroy's 38 and 40 Burn's Ave, also about an elevation of 118. In one of the conservation meetings, they, Wall Street Development talked about their driveway and cul-de-sac being built up about four feet. So, the water draining as it does today, I, you want to present pictures? I have pictures of the water during a May 5 rainstorm, showing the water going from Burn's Ave flowing down. In addition to that, there's some pictures where Wall Street Development left their equipment with the water draining down. And my concern is, if it's draining today and that cul-de-sac and road is built up four feet, it's going to drain back down towards Mr. Conroy's property and our property. And in front of our property is a sewer cleanout, so I think the town would be concerned about the amount of water that's going to flood back there. We also, again, being laypeople, did a quick calculation of all the driveways we're talking about. It's about 9,500 square feet of impervious blacktop that we're dealing with, so it's not an area that's just going to drain and dissipate into the soils, at least the way we look at it, the way it's been described. Again, we, we believe that the 20-foot by 100-foot property that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about the traffic on Burn's Ave. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100. That's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the, the overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about. The overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about. The overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned. The overburdening of the easement, as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street, and adding 14 homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the 20-foot by 100 that's still being referred to as. twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress. Concerned about the the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes on to Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right of way is not a right of way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Zav. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. And adding fourteen homes on to Burn Zav will certainly create traffic issues there as well. I believe that the twenty-foot-by-a-hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way. It is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions?
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Ave. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way, it is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions.
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Ave. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way, it is our private property. We're also concerned about snow removal. I'm also concerned about ingrass and egress.
All of her conditions.
Concerned about the overburdening of the easement as Mr. Conroy reports. And again, reading as much as I could, the traffic report that was submitted had absolutely no information about Ave. It dealt with Union Street and Pleasant Street. Adding fourteen homes onto Burn's Ave will certainly create traffic issues there as well. Believe that the twenty foot by a hundred that's still being referred to as a right-of-way is not a right-of-way, it is our private property. We're also concerned about